There you go.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour is seven o'clock, and as mayor, I hereby call to order the meeting of Laconia City Council scheduled for March 26, 2018, at this hour. As always, we'll begin our meeting tonight with a salute to our American flag. I would ask that you please rise and join Councilor Bruce Cheney in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For the record, I will note that the minutes to tonight's meeting are being kept by City Clerk Cheryl Hebert, and I would ask that she please call the roll.
Counselor Cheney.
Here.
Counselor Bowens.
Here.
Counselor Whitman.
Present.
Counselor Haynes.
Here.
Counselor Hamel.
Present.
Counselor Baldock.
Counselor Baldock is ill and will not be with us this evening.
Very angry.
Present.
But he is watching on TV.
He is watching on TV.
Yep, he has his agenda, he did his homework.
Or comfortable quarters, I'm told.
He's all set.
Okay, well, we hope so, and we wish our best to Counselor Baldock at home this evening. Let the record show that five of six counselors are present, and a quorum has been established for this meeting. Also note, for the record, that the council is joined at the front table tonight by City Manager Scott Myers and by the City Finance Director Donna Woodhamon. So we're gonna jump right, I have no proclamations tonight, we're gonna jump right into presentations. We have a number of special guests tonight. The council is aware that we invited the members of our legislative delegation to join us tonight. And I think what we'll do here, this will be fairly informal, but I think what we'll do here is, I'll call on those that I see, three to date, so we're missing three more, I think, at this moment. Hopefully they'll be here, because I think we had a positive RSVP from all of them, didn't we?
That was my understanding, Mr. Mayor, yes.
So I'll, we'll just start down the list and invite you to come to the podium and introduce yourself, and take a minute or two, if you like, to comment on the current legislative session, anything you think that needs to be brought to our attention. And then, once all of you have had a chance to speak, we'll start a dialogue, if we can, in terms of questions that might come from members of the council, or you may have some in return for us. So first of all, we're honored tonight to have State Senator Harold French, who represents us in the, in the New Hampshire State Senate with us tonight. Welcome, Senator.
Thank you very much. For the record, I'm Harold French, State Senator, District Seven. Everything is fine in Concord.
Really? Okay, thank you.
I had a call last week about the, the bill that was coming up for taxation of wrecked vehicles. And did you see the vote on that?
Yes.
And it was twenty-three to one?
Twenty-three to one.
I was the one.
You were the one. Thank you for being the one.
When we got done, I asked, did I miss something? Because I don't know why it went twenty-three to one. To tell you the truth, I think you're absolutely right, that they should either be taxed or register. But, I don't know. I'm glad you reached out on me for that. Sorry, we couldn't do any better. Lot of issues coming before us. As you know, we have probably a thousand bills we look at a year. Lot of them, you may disagree with the way it's, we vote, or agree with the way we vote. As, sitting here, you know, when you're looking at a piece of legislation, or something is coming before you, there's always a balance point. And sometimes it's forty-five percent, you can see absolutely forty-five percent, why it's wanted, why it's felt it's needed. But after you examine it, and it comes down the other way, I'm forced to go that way. So, any concerns you've had this year?
Now, thank you for coming, Senator French.
Sure.
And I want to go back to what the, the RVs that you just talked about. This was, this battle was fought, maybe, geez, I don't know, what, three, four years ago? Three, four years ago.
Yeah.
Same thing. I guess the Ivy lobbyists are, you know, adding more money to it, or whatever. But anyway, Laconia will lose five million dollars of taxable property.
Five million?
If this happens.
What, was that equate to a hundred thousand plus in taxes?
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be over a hundred thousand dollars in taxes, yes.
Yep, yep, five million. And Scott and I, and the mayor, went down to the committee meetings and brought down pictures of what is going on with these RVs. I mean, they're just not on wheels anymore. I mean, there's structures attached to them, porches, screenhouses, all kinds of stuff, you know? And it's pretty ludicrous to think that those are gonna leave at the end of the season. So, I think this is going back, is it going to committee, or to the legislative?
I think that was the bill that Senator French just referenced, that passed twenty-three to one in the Senate.
Yeah.
So it's crossed over now, it's going to House Municipal and County Government, where it's been assigned, but it has not been assigned to a hearing date, as of when I looked at it this morning. So it's through the Senate, so our efforts really need to be on the House on that one at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, and I totally understand your point on it. I have a woodshed, small woodshed, I'm taxed on it. A small barn, I'm taxed on it. These are camps. So, they were given the option, pay taxes or register. So now...
I think that's what came out at the last time.
Right, that's the way it came out. Now, it's nothing, I believe.
Yeah.
So they don't have to register them, and they don't pay tax on them. I don't understand the thinking, I really don't, I agree with you.
Well, what carried the day for us, and led to this compromise three years ago, was that we, we took pictures with us to the hearing, and showed them to the committee members, what would not be taxable if the bill was passed as proposed. And they were, it was very persuasive. It was, they were shocked, and I would say the general reaction was, well, we didn't know this is what you were talking about. I mean, we showed dozens of pictures of trailers that obviously had not been moved in decades, and had...
Right.
Attachments to them, as Counselor Hamel said, and it was clear that they were, they were mobile in name only.
And I know the campground owner's argument was, they did not want to be reporters to the municipalities...
That was one of their arguments, yes.
On, on who is renting from them.
Yeah, yeah.
But...
Well, we'd go out and inspect those anyway.
But I don't know what they are. I mean, I don't know what they're considered, if they're not considered a vehicle, and they're not considered a structure, what are they? So I, as I said, I think you're right. I voted against it, and I'm happy with my vote, even though, historically, I'm trying to keep ta, you know, stop taxes, do all this, and I think you're absolutely right on that.
Did you see the vote coming? Did you see the twenty-three to one vote coming?
No, I didn't. I was actually surprised. I really was. I mean, I vote number seven in line, and as it's coming towards me, everyone's voting for it, and I'm thinking, well, I don't think I'll be the only one. I voted against it, and then it continued, and it was like, I stand there, I look at the President, and I go, did I miss something? Because I don't know what I was missing, or what you were missing on it.
Do we know, who was the sponsor of this bill?
I, I'm not sure, I didn't, I didn't pay attention.
Senator Reagan, was it?
It was Senator Reagan.
Was it Reagan?
And I was down at the public hearings, I was hoping to hear him introduce it, and his reasoning behind it. And as often happens in the senator, and Senator Fresh, you've got multiple committees you serve on, and multiple hearings going on at the same time. So Senator Reagan wasn't there, and a staffer introduced it, and no knock against the staffer, but it was a very generic introduction, basically reading the title and what it did. And we didn't get to understand the nuance of why Senator Reagan sponsored it, but he was the only senator...
I will ask him, because he's, he and I share an office at the State House, so I see him all the time. I'll ask him what his...
Counselor Whitman has a question.
So sometimes you win and sometimes you lose, which I think you pointed out. I guess in terms of, assuming it's not blocked in the House, I guess we'd like to be able to work with you next session to, it's not fish nor foul, it's gotta be something. So I guess, next session, if we're not successful blocking at the House level, I guess we'd like to work with you to get some clarification, because it's gotta be one or the other, it can't be nothing.
Yeah, I mean, I, seriously, this is one piece I looked at, and I cannot believe the vote. And I don't, I didn't have the privilege of sitting in on the committee hearing, so I didn't hear the arguments. I did read the arguments in my papers, but I was just surprised it came out that.
Would that be something you'd be...
Yeah, we could absolutely work on it. If I'm not there, if I don't win again, I'm sure the next person would absolutely take hold of it, too. Yeah, because it should be changed back to where it was. You know, either register it or pay tax.
Okay, if you could hang around for a few minutes...
Should be happy to. If you think of anything.
Questions come up, all right? So we have two present, of our, two of our five state representatives, and so I'm gonna first, we're gonna go by seniority here, and so we know what that means, Senator, or Representative Tilton. This is Frank Tilton, Senior Member of our Legislative Delegation. Welcome.
Okay, thanks for inviting us, glad to be here. Yeah, I'm Frank Tilton from Laconia. We're called District Three. Four of us are just, are at large from Laconia, and the fifth seed is combined with Belmont, represent both. We have just finished crossover, rushed to it, the deadline was last Thursday, we did the last seventy bills on Wednesday and Thursday. We had ran into a few storms and had cancel, cancellations, so we've dumped our thousand bills, or those that passed, several hundred, on the Senate now, and we take the Senate bills, and we'll start hearings on it, so we'll be looking for the one that you were just talking about. We haven't paid a whole lot of attention to the Senate bills while they're still over there, 'cause a lot of them never, never see the light of day, we don't get to see them, if they don't make it. So we start our hearings, my committee starts them tomorrow morning, and we go through the Senate bills a lot faster, short a period of time before they have to be acted upon, so. So generally, successful session. You probably don't necessarily agree with all the ones, I don't agree with some of the ones that passed, there'll probably be a few questionable ones. However, I'd like to hear what your comments are ahead of time, so if you have things on this, bills that pass Senate, I do like to hear, City Manager keeps us informed, so let us know. Likewise, as you know, the county delegation has to pass the county budget, and I don't necessarily agree with that, but that's finished, and you've, that's gained a lot of publicity in the papers, so you probably are familiar with it. So with that, be glad to answer any questions or discussions, or anything you have.
Let's give your colleague a chance to speak here, and then we'll come back to questions, if that's all right.
Okay, sure.
So we go from the Senior Member of the delegation to the freshman of the delegation, Representative Phil Spagnola. Congratulations on your election, sir, and welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, I'm Phil Spagnolo, and newly elected. I've just had a couple of weeks in Concord now, and, you know, I've really excited to be there. I think it's an important time, lots of important legislation happening. I sit on the Health and Human Services Committee, which is near and dear to my heart, so I'm glad to be there as well. So, yeah, that's pretty much it. I'm, be willing to answer any questions, but I'm sure that Frank will be a lot better at that than, than I will.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks.
And we have the second newest member of the delegation with us tonight also, and that's Representative Charlie St. Clair. Representative, if you would come up and introduce yourself. You need no introduction, but there might be somebody out there in TV land who doesn't know you. And we're just asking the representatives to add any general comments at this time, and then we'll have questions later.
It's been a very interesting learning experience for me down in Concord, but the reality, I'm on the Transportation Committee, but my biggest chore, besides being here all the time, with my job, is reaching out to constituents and trying to stay in touch with city officials, including the City Manager, on whatever bills come up that affect the city directly, and most importantly, the constituents of both Belmont and Laconia. And I lean on reps that have been down there a long time, not just in this district, but statewide, and it's, it's a real push, tug and push down there, with all the different bills that come up. There's, I hate to use the term, but there is an awful lot of politics down there. A lot of things that surprise me on a state level that would come up. I see some of you smiling, so you know what I'm talking about. But, but other than that, I am interested in paying, I guess, just diving into things down there, as far as they affect the city. Out of the Transportation Committee, there's an awful lot of stuff that goes on, obviously, down there, just like on this council, that not everybody's aware that's happening. I guess that's all.
Any immediate questions for the representative, before we get into more general conversation? Is that the only committee you're on?
Right. As far as I know, we're only on one committee.
There are a few that have another one, if they have a lot of extra time.
Yeah, the Transportation Committee, I'm told, is a very busy committee, but it seems like there's some other ones that have a lot on their plate, too, so. And probably the most frustrating thing for me, much like this council sometimes, when we're in session, and the whole House is there, and somebody gets up and says something, you can't respond to it from back here. You know, there's a process to do that, and pretty much when you're in session, though, it's, everything's pretty much set in stone, how it's gonna go through before the vote, so. But Frank can tell you, he's a, he's a veteran at this, so he knows. A lot of times I lean on Frank or David Hewitt, when I have questions about things, so. And they have the, they have the leadership down there, you know, if you're Republican or Democrat, people in, in leadership are always trying to, not necessarily bend your hand or your arm to get you to vote a certain way, but they certainly try to encourage you to toe the party line, which I'm, I'm not very good at, so. But that's, that's, that's how that is, so.
Okay, I will stay with us and, and open the floor in a second here, as an icebreaker. Let's see, we're missing two reps so far, so if they come while we're still discussing things here, we'll, we'll recognize them as well, Representatives Hewitt and Spanos. I'll, I'll provide the icebreaker, if you will, I think, for, for, for the information of, of the four of you, the thing that, that set off discussion at the council level, if you're not aware, was the vote a month or so ago about the state retirement system, and whether the state should once again resume a role of helping to pay the bill for the state retirement system. And if memory serves, the, there was a, was it fifteen percent? Was that what it was?
It would bring the state back in at the fifteen percent level, yes.
The state percentage has gone from forty-five percent to zero...
Thirty-five to zero.
Thirty-five percent, sorry, to zero in recent years. And a bill was introduced, as I'm sure you all are aware, to get, to get the state back in the game, in terms of helping cities and towns pay the bill, and I believe the bill called for a fifteen percent state contribution. And that bill, as I'm sure you all are aware, was defeated in the House by one vote. And that really got our attention, because we learned that, that the city of Laconia stood to gain six hundred thousand dollars in, in property tax relief from that bill, if it had passed. And then we were further concerned, when we found out that of our delegation in the House, among the five of you, I think we only had one, one positive vote out of five.
I think we only had four representatives at the time, and one voted on each, on each side, and two didn't vote that day, so.
So we had one, one out of five votes, so even if one other person had switched or showed up that day to vote, the bill would have, would have, or two, I guess, would have taken two, 'cause the Speaker didn't vote, would have passed. So that was of, frankly, of great concern to us. So regardless of which side you came down on that issue, we would like to understand what your reasoning was behind your vote, or why you couldn't vote, or whatever. So I'll, I'll leave it to any of you who want to respond to that. Representative Tilton?
Yeah, I'll explain my rationale, the, two things. Number one, this is not the budget year. The upcoming year was put on the budget and passed a year ago, so that, all the funding for this, generally, we do very little additional funding in the second year. Things come up, perhaps, weren't foreseen at all. So the Finance Committee, the, I sit beside the Vice Chair of the Finance Committee, and the chair sits about three, three seats over. They had already, coming through committee, of course, they'd already looked hard at it, and they were very much against funding at this point. Second rationale is, I'm against the state contributing, because it's unfair as how they do it. It means we're paying for a percentage of the retirement for the employees in the, in the cities that are just overstaffed. I recall when I worked for the city, just chuckling at the size of some of the comparable activities in various cities, I won't name them all, but you probably have a feel, I'll, I'll tell you privately if you want, but I don't want to broadcast, but I could see people way overstaffed, so boiled down to the way the, the state was paying their share is directly proportional to how big the staff is on that particular case. So we would not get a dollar back on our dollar that goes there. And the city, the state doesn't have a printing machine to print money like the federal government, so it's basically coming out of here. Now, I'm all for the state contributing across the board on something that's fair and rational, meals and room tax. I would be anxious to see more come back to the cities. But just because some state, some city is overtaxed, or overstaffed, put it that way, why should Laconia pay a disproportionate share?
Well, I think we would, I think we would counter, and I appreciate your input, with the fact that if you're representing the city or town in the state of New Hampshire, your complaint is that we have no control over the retirement system, whatever. In other words, it's you, the legislature, that determines how, the, the terms and benefits that are gonna be paid.
Well, that's correct.
Retirement Board.
That's correct, there's a board.
You appoint the retirement board.
Yeah, the board does that.
So, I mean, it's, it's like, if we had total control of what the benefits were, and how much we would have to be taxed of it, we have almost no control over that. I mean, that would be our argument, you know? So the, the legislature can change that if it wants to, but it doesn't. And we all know there's a crisis nationwide in terms of, of trying to fund pension benefits, and how many municipalities and even states are technically bankrupt because of it.
Yeah, we're, we're not the worst, but we definitely have, have a big elephant there to go after.
But it isn't, it hasn't been the city of Laconia making those promises.
Yeah.
Yes, we, we're responsible for our payroll, no question about that, but we're not the ones responsible for making the promises as to what gets paid. It's out of our control.
Well, I, I agree with you there.
Counselor Whitman?
Understanding your rationale, Representative Tilton, it not being a budget year, but if it were to come up next year, when it is a budget year, I guess, the, the issue that I see is that, you know, there's a number of different things that have happened this session that had disproportionately affected Laconia, the recreational vehicles being an example of that, and, you know, potentially the bill that would tilt the fines that get collected by Environmental Services, rather than going back towards funding the system that it, it's associated with, you know, going back to the, to the, to the state itself. It just seems to me that, you know, when I look at it, you know, understandably, from a parochial standpoint of a city counselor, to be able to deliver six hundred thousand dollars of tax relief to, to the, to the community would be something we'd hope you'd support, at least when it comes up in the, the context of the budget.
Yeah, I, I think this should be brought up well ahead of the budget talks, and committee meetings on it, you know, you know, in December, before things really get moving.
Anyone else? Counselor Bowens?
I guess I'd wanna get clarification on your comment that the cities and towns are overstaffed, and therefore, the contributions that the state makes is disproportionate, you're not seeing the bang for the buck, so to speak.
Correct.
I think that's your comment. I wonder what empirical evidence you have that would support that kind of rationale. Certainly, I don't think of the city of Laconia as overstaffed at all, and...
No.
It's the city of Laconia that you represent. You get elected here, you get votes in the city of Laconia, you run citywide, you're not divided out in Belmont. And what we're looking at is a ben, a direct benefit to the city of Laconia, and if, I'm just not aware of any kind of empirical evidence that would support the idea that Dover, or Portsmouth, or Manchester, or Keene, or for that matter, Center Harbor, or Moltenboro, is overstaffed, and therefore provides a rationale for saying this kind of legislation just doesn't deliver the bang for the buck. So I'd like to see that kind of support, I'd like to see that evidence across the state of New Hampshire, that there's some kind of rationale for that, for that reasoning. Otherwise, it sounds to me like an excuse. I'll be candid. It sounds to me just like an explanation without a rational basis. That's my take on it.
Well, I saw, I was quite familiar with various departments around the state, compared with Laconia's Public Works, for sure. And I was, likewise, I could hear from the other staff people, and I could see, there were, you know, I was, kept my eyes open. I can also say, very specifically, Belknap County has the least staffing of any county, considering its size. It has a budget much lower in, in staffing-wise than comparable counties.
So would you consider your, your comparison to the overstaffing more anecdotal, based upon...
Yeah, there's, there's no study that says exactly what you need, because every, every...
So I was in Dover ten weeks ago, and they seemed overstaffed. That's, that's the kind of conclusions we got here, right?
Well, I was on a couple places, I was on a selection committee, helping Dover being one of them, Hampton being another one, and I was down and spent a couple days on a selection committee with them.
Well, I don't expect you to throw, throw any municipalities or towns under the bus, but I would very much appreciate having that private conversation with you, because in my, in my view... my view, you represent the city of Laconia and that's where my interests are focused in on. And we're dealing with budget issues this year that are going to hurt, in part because of the county budget that's been passed. It's not all your fault. I'm not blaming you and I get the fiscal restraints. I get all that. But we're going to be hurt this year. And who knows what's going to happen next year when the reserves aren't there in terms of the county budget. I mean, this year, everybody will probably make it through. Next year is going to be the dire year in terms of the reserves just not being there. And I don't know what the county delegation's response to that is or the county commissioner's response to that is or how you're going to address that issue a year down the road. So those are just my comments.
Well, I think this year is a drastic year and we're on the glide path, but I warned the county about three years ago.
I know you did.
We should not have been using the fund balance.
I know you did. I know you did. I get that.
And so we've been, we've been living below our means in the county because we've had a very austere budget and it's come home to roost. So we have been getting by, you know, with low bills in the county because we're austere operation and using reserves.
Councilor Hamel has a question?
I do.
Or comment?
First of all, I want to thank you, Frank, for coming in. I'm glad you're feeling better and I hope you stay on the mend.
Thank you.
Hope you stay well. I've already discussed with you about the pension before the meeting and I wasn't too pleased either, but, you know, a 35 percent shift down to all the towns and cities from the state, that was a big hurt on us. And, you know, if the state doesn't have the money for it, where do they think we're going to find it too? And we're seeing, again, a lot of legislation of passing all down to the cities and towns. Besides the RV thing, there's a bill for public utilities on property taxes and things like that that they want to do away with or come up with a different formula or...
I think the compromise was, it's been shipped to a study commission.
Yeah, well, I just want to make our, my voice on this is that...
Well, I agree with you.
Why would you give all the utilities a free pass on that? They're collecting their monthly bills from all of us and if they did get the free pass, how many pennies would be taken off our electric bill, if anything? So I hope that that legislation stays under the table somewhere and, you know, I can probably understand, there's probably a lot of communities that are using different formulas or things like that that maybe need to be looked at, but doing away with it altogether is just another stab in the heart of the taxpayers in the towns and cities.
No, I think the biggest interest of the commission that will study it is to get something that's consistent and not have a yo-yo effect with different communities.
Okay. And also what Councilor Lippman brought up about the Winnipesaukee River Basin project as far as the fines and things like that, those should remain within that committee or organization and not go back to the general fund. Those monies can be used for upgrades or, you know, those kinds of things. So that's another one that's being looked at, so.
Well, that's a, that's a clear enterprise fund, a separate fund. It does not mix. I worked on that for 10 years while working for the city, making sure that it is a dedicated fund that is fenced and it has to stay that way.
Okay. You know, I think also, since the time I've been here, I've been here 12 years now and it's been amazing the amount of downshifting that the state has done to the local communities just to balance their budgets and pass it on to everybody else. When the state assumed the responsibility of the teen, not the teen, what do I want to say? The county, the county kept the medical beds and the state took over the childcare. And, I mean, that was a big push-off because what happened on the county bed situation cost a lot more money than taking care of the individuals, the children. So, you know, that was a big pass me down to the county.
I agree with you.
Which was, there was in the trailer bill a hold harmless clause in there, but I guess that's long gone.
Yes, it is. That lasted about 30 years.
Yeah.
But we objected at the time, but it did happen. We now have a Senator that was responsible for that when, remember the legislature.
Councilor Lippman?
So there's another bill that, maybe Senator French, you can help us on the, again, is another sort of downshifting kind of situation to us, HB 1673, which reduced what we could charge for delinquent property tax payments that passed the House, even though it was voted out of committee unfavorably. But I think here again, from our standpoint in Laconia in terms of those people who pay their taxes on time, now there's less of an incentive for those who don't and so basically the taxpayers who pay end up subsidizing those who don't. And it makes our job in terms of collecting property taxes harder and it's a loss of revenue. So that, at this point, is outside of the House. It's in the Senate. We could use your help on that, Senator.
It was a huge amount that was in there. That, it did come out of committee unanimous. Somebody pulled it off the consent calendar and then when it finally got through for a vote in the full House, it was a huge majority that reversed the committee report.
23 to nothing out of committee.
And it was, it was close to the same ratio in the opposite direction. It was, nothing had been done. We had some penalties or as much as 18 percent.
So, I mean, I can understand, 18 percent is a higher rate, but when you look at it on an individual person's level, but when you look at when we don't have enough money to fund services, just like at a county level, you have to borrow it, then everybody else has to pay more to cover the cost. So that's another one that effectively is another downshift. It's just, it's $100,000 here, $50,000 there, you know, $100,000 there. All of a sudden, it ends up being millions.
There's some irony here too, Representative, in the sense that if the argument is that paying for the state retirement system, the state retirement system is wholly the responsibility of cities and towns, and then the legislature looks at it from a standpoint of the people who can't afford to pay their property taxes or don't at any given time should be given a break because you raised their property taxes. And you see the irony in that?
Yes, I do.
You've got the House voting both ways, one to raise the property taxes in Laconia and lower the penalty for not paying your property taxes in Laconia.
Well, there's some middle ground instead of having a huge, is that me?
I can't tell direction. Well, let's, let's give someone else a chance here.
Okay.
We'll open the floor up to any of the rest of you who've joined us this evening. We started with questions about the state retirement system and that vote and then we've covered some other territory as well. So if any of the rest of you would like to react to any of those items that we've covered so far, now would be a great time to do it. Representative St. Clair?
The first time that came to, on the retirement fund, when I came up for a vote, I voted in favor of giving back, you know, the 15 percent to the city. That lost by, no, the first time...
I think it failed by about five votes and then it came up on a motion or reconsider and that failed by one vote.
Right. And I had talked with the city manager before that second vote and actually some detail with former Councillor Brenda Baer and I could not be there because of work and, but I thought that it would either win or fail by several votes. My worst, my worst scenario was that it would fail by one vote or two votes.
Two votes.
And actually, when I heard that, I was in Chicago and I just remember choking on my water. However, I also felt that had I was able to get back there for that and it had been a tie vote, I figured that the Speaker of the House probably would have voted in a negative on that. If it does come up again, and I'm sure it will, you can be assured, to me, it's a no-brainer. The city I represent and the town I represent both wanted that vote to go in the positive. And I don't understand it. I don't understand the meals and rooms tax, that the city does not get its fair share on that and I think somebody should be held to task for that. Quite frankly, with the money problem, not just at the county and local level, but on the state level, I wish there would be more thought given to other ways to raise money. And sometimes when I bring that up, I'm told that, no, we have to look at ways to cut costs, but we live in a society where there are expenses and they need to be paid for. Whether it's through taxes or user fees or something like that, it seems to me that that's the most fair way to pay for these things because it spreads it out. But in any event, that's my take on the retirement thing.
Okay, either of the, either of the other two gentlemen care to weigh in on any of these subjects?
And obviously, Councilor Lippman, if the, if any of this stuff comes up, again, quite frankly, I don't like to say marching orders, but I feel like I do take my marching orders from residents of both Belmont and Laconia and those city governments and town governments because that's who I'm representing down there. So, thanks.
Appreciate that there's...
Senator?
Things to weigh off, you know?
I have to agree with Frank that it's not the budget year for the retirement, adding back to 15 percent. As you know, we've spent more this year on the opiate crisis. We put out $52 million on that. There's a bill before us now that just passed the House for Family Medical Leave Act, which if it passes will be a hit to the budget of $40 million. We don't have the money. It's not, it's not there to spend. So I'm glad the House killed it, so I didn't really have to look at it. Saved me a vote. I don't know how I would have voted had it come through, but I didn't have to look at it.
But if you, if the state doesn't have the money to spend, what says the town and cities have the money to spend?
You know, it's all coming...
It's just that, here it is.
Yeah.
Guys, deal with it now.
Well, it's been that way for a while.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Right, right.
And it keeps going that way.
And as you know, insurance, retirement insurance has gone skyrocketing. Insurance rates have skyrocketed for everybody. The state's payments for insurance for employees is way up. There's a, it has to be cut someplace and, and we're dumping, like I said before, we're dumping more money into the disabled, which we should. We're putting more money into fighting the opiate crisis, which we should. It's all priorities and there's only so much money we have to spend.
Well, but to, to, to add to the discussion, a point that's already been made, I'll reiterate, is that, that, by having the state take a pass on any of these issues, all we're doing is pushing that tax down on the property taxpayers in your district. As that's where you want, you know, in effect, what you're saying is that's who we want to have pay the bills. We want the property taxpayers. And in your district, it's particularly tough because the two cities in your district both have tax caps.
Right.
And it certainly isn't in their immediate best interest to say, okay, we have to give up something else in the city now because the state passes tax down on us and we have to cover it and it's got to count against our cap. And that's, that's, you know, the truth of the matter is the way we look at it. So it's, we can't even just say, oh, well, it's the state's fault. We have no choice.
No, and this is why it's very important for you to reach out to us when these things are coming down, like you did on this other bill, the camping bill. It's very important for you to reach out to us and give us your side because otherwise we're hearing from lobbyists, we're hearing from...
That should be the first red flag.
You have lobbyists there.
I don't.
No, the municipalities do.
Well, listen to that one.
Yeah, yeah. So, so it is very helpful. It really is helpful for you to make that call and talk to us about it.
Mr. Myers?
It's been brought up a couple of times tonight on the rooms and meals tax distribution and I think this is something that should have bipartisan support by our entire delegation. And that's, the distribution formula has been frozen and suspended for a number of years and it started in fits and starts and it gets frozen again. So by statute, rooms and meals are supposed to be split on a 60% keep for the state and a 40% distribution to the local level based on a formula. Right now, the local communities across the state are getting 25%. A number of years ago, after the downturn in the economy, there was a catch-up provision that was put in place that said as long as revenues grew by at least $5 million, so it wasn't the state necessarily having to come up with the money, if the revenues increased by at least $5 million, the first $5 million would go back to the municipalities for that catch-up provision. And in the budget year 14, 15, the $5 million did materialize in the first year and it only came in in the second year, effectively costing communities an additional $10 million. Only $5 million came rather than 15. And the revenue came in, so it wasn't that the state needed to come up with new money. In budget year 16, 17, again, it didn't show up in the first year of the budget, it came in in the second year. So once again, only $5 million came rather than $15 million. In the 18, 19 budget that we're working on, it doesn't show up in either year, yet the revenues have still increased year over year by $5 million. So I would say for Republicans, Democrats in the Senate and the House, that's not having to go find money on how to pay for a service. That's money that is coming in above and beyond, that that's what the catch-up provision was for. And I think for planting the seed early for the next budget year, excuse me, I would say that's a sustainable source of revenue that communities like to count on for that sustainable budgeting practices that we try. And the fact that the money is coming in doesn't mean the state needs to raise taxes, raise fees or cut something else in order to fund it. So I think that's a very reasonable approach and I was very disappointed to see it suspended for both years of the two-year budget that we're on right now in the state.
I know I'm hearing there's a lot of complaints on that from Hampton and Portsmouth, two, a city and a town that contribute a lot to the, with all the restaurants and all and hotels they have. But, yeah, I will look into that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilor Hamel?
I've got two quick things. One, it's Motorcycle Week.
Yep.
I guess my question would be is if a bill could be presented to either the Senate or the House or someone who could write a bill at Laconia, we would love to see them participate more in, say, the expenses of Bike Week. Bike Week is going to be, how many years, Charlie, 92, 93?
95.
95 years. Laconia has been ground zero for those 95 years. Laconia has paid for that for 95 years. A lot of those years, it was put on the property owner's back to fund that, which at that time was roughly $250,000 a year for the state to gain a tremendous amount of money through tolls, restaurants, hotels, you name it. So Laconia is still flipping the bill for that, still being ground zero, although, you know, it's diminished some, not as many come.
Right. The state contributes about $30,000.
Towards advertising.
Yeah.
Towards advertising.
So what areas?
But Laconia has to pay all the safety services, fire...
Is that the areas you'd be looking for assistance in?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we've long held the position that the, that, you know, it's the single biggest attractor of out-of-state guests that the state has.
Yeah, it certainly is big.
And certainly most of the state, if not all the state, I guess if you're in Colebrook, you could argue that you're not benefiting directly from it, but certainly most of the state...
Everything south of here and slightly north, yeah.
Certainly most of the state benefits from it and yet it's, as Counselor said, you know, the state's contribution to that is about $30,000 through the Department of Tourism.
Yep. Yeah, so...
That should be, and I'm a motorcycle enthusiast.
Yeah.
You know, we ride everywhere. Anyway, but the state should just be... Anyway, but the state should just be hammering that event everywhere. One, you know, because eventually you're going to see that bottom line for revenues for the state go down.
Yeah.
If there's fewer and fewer people that come. You know, a part of the reasons for that is the generation has gotten a lot older, motorcycles are expensive, and the new kids coming up probably don't want them, can't afford them.
That's a bunch of old guys like us.
Exactly, you know? But, and, and another thing is, there's not a rally you can go to every day all summer long. So unless New Hampshire puts its face forward of, for this event, just other motorcycle rallies are gonna, are gonna just keep taking some, taking some-
So is that where you'd want some effort put on the advertising promotional or the safety?
Both.
Both.
Yeah. I mean, unless you want the event to, to dwindle even more, it's revenue you're losing, and, and we still have to pay the same amount because you've still got to have the same services, so-
And this is, this is what you'd want to be bringing forward come fall to your reps and to myself, to be put in the budget for next year, because next year will be the budget year.
Yeah. So I, I think it's been asked several times. I know the Bike Week Association have been down and asking, and it just falls on-
Well, Charlie's got more pull down there now than he used to have.
Well, I don't know how much pull he has.
You're a good Charlie.
But, but it, it just seems to fall on deaf ears every year, every year, and we still have the expense, these, these people coming up to come here and visit the rest of the state, I mean-
Oh, sure, and, and they, it, it does great things for Laconia, puts it on the map.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, there's a lot of benefits for Laconia.
Yeah. But I mean, I, I wish the state would, would be more involved. They seem to advertise everything else, NASCAR, and, you know, they, they're here for two days and then gone.
Right.
So, you know, Bike Week is a week long now. Anyway, that's enough on that subject.
Okay.
And I forgot the other one, so I guess I'm done.
Good, unlucky. Thank you.
Let's see, we haven't, does anybody want, you, do you have anything to add, Representative?
No, I wasn't around for most of those bills when they were voted on, so I don't really have much input.
Okay. So any other subjects we want to cover before we let these gentlemen excuse us?
Yeah, and I'm not looking to generate controversy on this one, so that means I'm probably going to.
Not today, you're-
But I was disappointed with the cuts that the core program here in Bellinap County got in the latest budget version. They went from $200,000 plus down to $128,000. I'm not sure of the exact numbers, but those kinds of programs work. You should believe that. Those kinds of programs actually reduce recidivism. They actually help people get up and get going and start their lives drug-free. Those are the kinds of programs that we need. I, I know that Representative Tilton was not in favor of that, of those kinds of cuts. Thank you, Frank. And maybe, if I got it wrong, tell me. But those, that kind of programming is a necessity, especially when the Senator tells us about the commitment that we're making to the opioid crisis on a state level. Those, those kinds of things go hand in hand. And that's just my comments on the core program, and I wouldn't feel good about myself if I didn't say something about it before we were done.
I, I do have one more.
Yep, you thought of it.
I thought of it. It's House Bill 1763, which will probably upset a lot of people with vehicles. It's relative to implementing a road usage fee as part of the motor vehicle registration, depending on the mileage or the gallons used by a vehicle. So people who have a Prius, they're not paying as much, they're going to be paying a lot more. So I was wondering if any of you have a comment on that, on how that's going to come about.
Representative Tilton?
The, road usage is a, a good nomenclature on this. This is to basically the folks that are not buying gasoline but using the roads, this is their means of contributing to the upkeep of the roads. Upkeep is not just fixing potholes, it's moving the snow, you know? Should we not plow the roads that are used by the electric vehicles or the hybrid vehicles? It's another way to figure out how to pay for it. I mean, the gas tax never budged for years and years. Finally, about three years ago, four years ago, there was a, a small bump. It took 20 years to get that in.
So, so does this mean that the more mileage you put on, the less it's going to cost you, and the least mileage you put on, the more it's going to cost you?
The, yeah, compared with the savings for not buying gas, it's a small piece. And this, there's been a lot of work to figure out, you know, how to get a fair share. You know, the, the savings for buying a vehicle is, first of all, you're not using as much gas, and you're, you're saving it with the thing you bought, but you've still got to use the roads.
Yeah, so, so if you have an electric vehicle that uses zero gas, so they drive 100 miles, then you're going to charge them the tax on the gas for that 100 miles?
No, that bill, well, the little bit that they, or the portion that they do use gas, they'll pay for it. But, you know, supposedly they get much better gas mileage, they're not going to pay as much, anywhere near as much. It's trying to make sure that it's just all the cost of the road, maintenance, plowing, upkeep, doesn't go to the people that have got the huge gas guzzles that are already paying an awful lot for gas. But the amount of gas sold is much less now because, first of all, they get much better mileage, it's more expensive, so people drive less.
So sell the electric cars and buy the SUVs, right?
Well, whatever you got, well, then you won't have any roads. You better buy something that doesn't need a road, put it that way.
That, that bill did pass the House, and it's going to the Senate right now, so if there's support for that, we should be looking for the support in the Senate.
Yeah, I, I think the, you know, the legislature automatically voted against gas tax for years and years, and the Highway Fund is running out. I mean, it's diminished terribly. And so the upkeep of the road, you know, is almost gimmick to, just to, you know, scrape along enough revenue in the Highway Fund just to, just to keep them up.
Okay, does anyone want to have the last word here? Anything we're missing? All right, I'm going to thank all of you gentlemen sincerely for, all of us do, for taking the time out of your busy schedules to be with us tonight and answer questions.
Let me suggest much earlier next year.
Much earlier?
After the elections.
We'll try to be awake earlier.
Better, better before the committees have got locked in, because it's-
But I would like to point out, Representative St. Clair, before you leave.
Thank you, Frank, for coming.
The clerk has a multi-page document here that lists some of our concerns, some of these bills we talked about tonight, some we didn't, and if you would grab one of those from her before you leave, we'd very much appreciate it. Okay, thank you very much again for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Stay well, Frank.
Okay, we're on to item eight on the agenda, acceptance of minutes from previous meeting. We're talking about the meeting of March 13th. Those minutes were submitted by, and circulated by the clerk on, it's March 12th, I'm sorry, and she, she distributed those minutes a day later on March 13th. No corrections were received at her office, so if no one has any objection tonight, I'm going to declare the minutes of our meeting of March 12th to be accepted tonight as submitted by the city clerk. We have no consent and action items on the agenda tonight, so we're on to citizen comments for matters not on the agenda. Is there anyone with us tonight who would like to address the council on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda? No? Okay, interviews, we have none. Nominations, we have two nominations to act on tonight. The first one is William Bill Stewart. He was with us last week, or at our last meeting, seeking appointment to a regular member position on the planning board for a three-year term expiring at the end of June 2021. Would any member of council care to make a motion to appoint Mr. Stewart to that position? Okay, I don't hear a nomination, so that, that appointment will not be made tonight. That nomination fails. I would ask the city manager to have his office send a note to Mr. Stewart, thank him for applying, and, and just informing him that the city council at this point in time does not wish to make that appointment.
I will do that, sir.
And thank him for his-
Right, for applying, yes. Okay, next up is item 12B, John Nivis, seeking appointment to a regular position on the trustee of the trust funds for a three-year term, this is a reappointment, a three-year term expiring at the end of March 2021. Would anybody on the council care to make that nomination?
I will, Your Honor.
All right, and a second by Councilor Hammel. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor of appointing Mr. Nivis, please raise a hand. Five votes affirmative that motion carries, and the nomination is confirmed. Public hearings, we have no public hearings tonight, so we're on to the mayor's report. And I see Ms. Clark in the audience tonight, and it was my pleasure and the city manager's pleasure, I think, to have attended the 125th birthday celebration that was held at Pittman's Freight Room on Saturday night, and it was the actual date, if I'm correct, celebrated on the actual date that our city was incorporated in the year 1893 by an act of legislature moving from township status to city status, and that's what we're celebrating this year. And so that was a, a lot of work put on again by a lot of volunteers, and we look forward to celebrating some more in a grander fashion on July 7th. Do I have that right, date right? July 7th is going to be the major day for the celebration this summer, and hope that everyone can, can join in on this. I, on a personal note, I enjoyed attending it for a lot of reasons, but one was to, to renew some old acquaintances from people that I hadn't seen in a long time, and, and that was very enjoyable, and also meeting a, a number of people for the first time. And one, one, the thing that brought the biggest smile to my face, if I can indulge for a minute, was there was a, a Laconia High School student there that was sitting at a table where I was conversing with the people around the table for a few minutes, and I briefly shook his hand and just introduced myself to him. And later in the evening, he walked over to me and handed me his phone, and on his phone was a picture of he and I that was taken four years ago. And he was in his catcher's gear, Little League catcher's gear, and I had the honor that year, it was my first year as mayor, I had the honor that year of throwing out the first pitch for the Little League season. And, and my pitch was not terribly good, and he caught it on the bounce, I might add. It was only one bounce, though. And as is tradition, he then walked out to the mound and presented me with the ball as a souvenir of the occasion, and I whipped out a pen and asked him to autograph the ball. And so when he said, he pointed at the picture and he says, that's me. And, and I said, oh, you're the, you're the kid, as to confirm it, I said, you're the kid that that day that hit a home run, not only over the right field wall, but off the scoreboard, which is way up in the air, beyond the right field fence at Colby Field. And a lot of people who there were, were there that day commented that no one had ever hit a home run that far at, at Colby Field. And then he, he, he asked me if, where, if I had any idea where the ball is that he had autographed. And I said, yeah, it's sitting on the mayor's desk at City Hall. And if I had a picture of his face when I said that, it was worth the price of admission right there to see his face light up when, when I told him. So if you get a visitor down there, I told him to stop at any time during business hours, and he can see the ball, it's right there on the, meant a lot to him.
We'd put the white gloves on before we let anybody touch that.
It's in pristine condition. So anyway, that was just a personal note that really, really touched me, and I'm sure as we celebrate this summer and go on, there'll be many more such occasions to catch up on people far and wide as they come to the city for the, for the celebration. Committee reports. I know we had a Public Works Committee meeting tonight, and Councilor Bowens is stepping in as the temporary chair for that committee, and do you have a report, sir?
I'll give you an update. It's not really a report. We discussed the policy changes as it relates to the retaining walls, and some of the ordinance changes and the discussions as it relates to the cut, cut, the cuts in the driveway and improving them. We came to a consensus with some changes to, I don't know if you folks have got the document itself that discusses the retaining wall policy changes and the driveway cuts.
Did we get that at the last meeting? I don't recall.
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Thought we might have sent it out electronically, maybe we just did it to the Public Works Committee members who received that.
Yeah, so, what I'll ask the city manager to do is to get a copy of that to all account-
The amended version.
Huh?
The amended version.
Well, both the amended version and the original version that we worked on, that we worked on tonight, so you'll know what changes we made, and if you got disagreements about that, we can talk about it. I was up in the air as to whether we needed to schedule another meeting, like 15 minutes before the next council meeting, to recommend those changes to the council, but we really did come to a consensus about what we were looking for in terms of the retaining wall policy and the driveway cut policies, and are waiting for Wes to get us back what we agreed to in terms of consensus. So when we get that back, I think that we can approach this by distributing it to members of the committee, with that, we don't need a meeting. If anybody wants to make a change, say so. If there are no changes, we'll come in with a recommendation, next council meeting, that those, that those changes be adopted.
So you do or don't need another meeting?
I don't think we need another meeting, that's my thought.
So we'll put it on the agenda as new business, the unfinished business, I guess?
Probably new business, because it's the first time it's on the city council agenda.
Correct me if I'm wrong, do you think we need another meeting?
No, we'll, we'll get you the updated revision, and if you have any concerns, we can schedule a meeting and hang back on it for another week.
So tentatively, we'll say next meeting, new business.
It should be on there, new business, yes.
That covers both these subjects?
We'll just be careful not to have a meeting. If you get the changes, if you got a disagreement, let me know, because then I'll schedule a meeting. And if we don't, if there are no changes, I'll just propose it at the next, at the next council meeting.
This covers both subjects?
Both subjects.
Okay.
We got an update for our emergency lanes, accepted, unaccepted road from Wes. We got a spreadsheet for that. I assume that that's going to be distributed to the council, but that's probably going off the table until we get through the summer, the summer construction season, and we won't be doing much on that until the fall.
Okay, any other committee business tonight? Liaison reports? When is the, when, is the planning board settled on when they're going to vote on the master plan?
It's still up in the air. And the master plan is, geez, help me on this, I think we've already recommended the changes, but no, because we didn't have, no, yeah, but that'll be on the agenda when we get a quorum and recommend and adopt the master plan changes.
Don't know when that is yet?
No, we don't know if we're going to have a quorum in April or not.
When is the meeting scheduled for now?
It was scheduled for April 2nd. We know we won't have a quorum on that date. We're looking for April 9th or April 16th, when we may have a quorum.
Okay. Any other liaison reports tonight? Okay, citizens request to comment on current agenda items. This is the point in the agenda, on the agenda tonight where we invite comment from the audience on matters that are on tonight's agenda. Does that cover anyone tonight? No? Okay, we're on to the city manager's report. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have two reports and then a little added page dealing with some budget drivers that we're looking to go over- we're looking to go over with you tonight. The first report would be the economic development report that begins on page thirteen of your agenda. You can see there was a slight uptick in the unemployment rate for Laconia County, Concord, Manchester and the state and the January number over the December number, most likely holiday-driven, but generally speaking, unemployment is very low, not only in New Hampshire but throughout the country, and many are considering us to be at full employment. The inflation number on page fourteen came in for January and it was two-point-two, so for the first two months of the year, we're at two-point-one for January, two-point-two for February, just because it's listed there under the Colonial Theater. The city is processing its additional contribution to the theater project this week in order to comply with the council's March thirty-first deadline. Bellnap BDC is compiling, I think I shared with you a month or so ago, a Dropbox to start loading in a lot of the legal documents that need to be reviewed by the various attorneys for the various funding sources. They're setting up the holding accounts, if you will, for funds to start being deposited in order to go to the closing date. So the city will hit the March thirty-first deadline for making our contribution and we will be getting that contributed to the project this week. And we're excited that they're in that final compilation of funds and dollar stages at this point to work towards a closing date, which we don't have at this point, but it's, we're in that...
By the end of April, I'm told. But as terms of the one-point-four million we have on loan now, that is being repaid this week?
It's, we're swapping papers, so in essence, we're cutting a check for an additional two-point-eight million and some loose change on top of that, just to keep it simple.
That will effectively retire that note.
That'll retire the first note. We'll get all the closing documents with everything when the project closes on the full four-point-two million. We know part of it is coming out of the TIF account balance and the additional amount is coming out of what we had called the undesignedated balance in the general fund. So I was working with the finance director today and we're on the same page with where the funds and we know the schedule for when the general fund is paying back the downtown TIF account and all of that. So we're in a good place. The numbers that were sent over in an attachment matched up exactly with what the finance director came down and said, "Do you have their numbers?" And it was to the penny. So I think we're in great shape and that check will get in there and we're looking forward to the closing date on that as well.
Let me just interrupt for a second. Does anybody have any questions about the colonial status or note at this point? Okay, go ahead, thank you.
All right, so on the project update, we're getting ready for construction season. Fortunately, we missed the latest nor Easter last week. I know not too many people were disappointed when they woke up and looked out the window on Thursday morning and saw nothing. That was good.
That was a good morning.
It was a good morning. So road projects, we're waiting a little bit on Mother Nature, just getting a little of the frost out of the ground, but early to middle April for a number of the road projects that are going on here. Making progress with the state on the Weers Beach restoration, hoping to finalize that so we can do some additional work on the beach project in the fall. Councilor Bowens just discussed the master plan update. The dog park project had gone out to bid back when the group associated with that had put some back-of-the-envelope numbers together. They thought it might be in the fifty-thousand-dollar range. We went out through the city's bidding procedures and got, I believe, three, if not four bids came in, and they all exceeded a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And we knew that the funds available from the Dog Park Association and the funds that are being donated, which to refresh, because it's been more than a year since we've discussed it, but we had a fifty-thousand-dollar cash contribution towards construction and a fifty-thousand-dollar contribution pledged towards a maintenance account in which the family donating the funds had agreed that, over the years, more than just the interest on the fifty-thousand maintenance account could be spent down in order to take care of any upkeep to the park because not minimizing fifty thousand dollars in the maintenance account, but at today's interest rates, that doesn't generate a whole lot of income if you're only able to spend the income. So we're working through that. So the bids came in. Staff has reached back to the low bidder to see if we could discuss a revision to the plan and still have a very usable dog park going forward. We believe we've got a plan somewhere in around the seventy-five-thousand-dollar range, which will provide for the driveway in. We've got the easement in place with EverSource. It'll do the gated area. It will provide one gated area for all dogs at this point. The original plan had kind of shown a large dog area and a separate fenced-in area for smaller dogs, but we think we can have a very workable fenced-in dog recreational area with one enclosure and still leave the ability as additional fundraising comes on to add the second enclosure at a later date. So we've gone back to the family looking to donate the funds to make sure they're on board with that approach. I did discuss with them that if it was seventy-five thousand, I would just like to bring it back to council's attention for a modified vote, if you will, that if the city council was fine with spending seventy-five thousand and leaving twenty-five thousand in a maintenance account. When we say maintenance, it's really not a whole lot there. We're putting in a gravel driveway, a dumpster pad, a small dumpster pad, a gated area and some chain-link fence. So it's not a high, a high-maintenance area. And the volunteer group, the Dog Park Association, is really looking to be in and self-policing and doing some of the general cleanup. So we're just confirming with the donor that they're okay with that approach. We've got a commitment from the contractor to come in and do a reduced scope of work. And once we line all that up, we'll bring something back to the council just to revise the way that hundred thousand dollars was split up. We'll make sure we have those funds in hand and then we'll go ahead and we'll award the contract. But if we can move that along in a relatively quick manner, we're looking to have that construction occur this spring.
For our two newest members, I don't know if you all both are aware of the location for this? All right, it's the old, it's the old city sand pit off of Province Street. It's just, just east of the, or just west, I'm sorry, of the old Freudenberg and O.K. plant. You go down that road there and that's the way it will be accessed in the Lakes Business Park. And so we have, we've already voted to allow them to use that city property for the dog park there.
And again, on a couple of the park projects, we're looking to go ahead with the court resurfacing in Sanborn Park and Tardif Park for May of this year. That contract has already been out to bid and awarded. And when weather allows, we're targeting May. We've also gone in and done some of the engineering design plans. The final ones are anticipated by the end of this month and will be out to bid to do some of the erosion at the Bartlett Beach and Bond Beach areas. So I can stop there. The final document I have deals with what's driving the budget, the construction of the budget this year, but I can stop with the projects and see if there's any questions at this point.
The Weers Beach, I read the report that the, you're waiting to hear back from the Department of Environmental Services on that. Is it still probabilistic that we'll get that construction done at the end of the season?
We're hopeful to at least get some components, whether or not the, any sand could be dredged out of the channel or just beyond the channel to be utilized for the, for the beach renourishment can be utilized. That's tied in, we found out that that's an Army Corps of Engineer oversight, that channel, so they're charged with maintaining it. In a perfect world, we've got to think that the sand came off the beach, went around the jetty and went through the channel and is all just below the channel where we start to widen there and that it would be perfect sand to come back and use as a cost-effective way. And at the same time, there are some low areas there that I think the Army Corps would look to dredge. So one is not contingent upon the other, but we certainly, if we can coordinate them, would like to do so. That doesn't mean we couldn't start with some initial phases of extending the jetty a little bit further, if that's one of the final options, to stop that sand from flowing around and making its way down the jetty. We've already done some of the wind fences and some others down there as well, but I think DES is going to want to make sure that we have the big fixes in place before they allow us to re-nourish the beach with the sand because the last thing they want to do is have the sand move back in there and then in a few years have it gone again because we don't have a bigger fix in place. So we're working through that. It is a larger project than DES typically sees, so they're walking carefully on this one.
Go ahead. Army Corps of Engineers been responsive to the whole project at this point?
I don't know that it was on their radar, so to speak, until we landed it there. And I think we found out at a meeting with DES that this might be the only inland waterway, I want to say in, not just in New Hampshire but in New England, I think I was told, but don't quote me on that, but the only inland waterway that the Army Corps is responsible for in New England. So I'm not sure how high of a priority versus them doing some of the, you know, harbors. So in New Hampshire, that could be the Piscataqua, it could be Hampton, Seabrook area in the harbor. You know, I know they're doing, they dredged the Piscataqua River before, which leads out to deep water. So I'm not sure this was on their radar, but we've put it on their radar to see if we can help coordinate something on this.
And they've been responsive?
I don't have a specific answer for you on that part, but I will get you one. But that is obviously, Army Corps is federal, so if we certainly need a little help, we could certainly reach out to our federal delegation and ask them to assist with making that contact if need be. So the final document I have that's in your packet as a tad is entitled Financial Impacts for the Budget. So just as a way of kind of kicking off a preliminary budget discussion, the intent, and the mayor and I worked through a schedule which I will get to you tomorrow, but starting budget presentations basically in the middle of May. If it's a meeting night that we regularly meet on, we'd look to start at six o'clock and do an hour between six and seven with, in some cases, it might be just one larger department. In some cases, it might be a couple of smaller departments that we can fit two or three in an hour. We've also looked at blocking off a couple of the off Mondays, if you will, when we're not usually meeting. One of them would actually be the day after Memorial Day, which would fall on a Tuesday because of the holiday. And then the other couple of off Mondays in June, so that we can dedicate those just to budget presentations that we've done in the past. Couple of the larger departments like Public Works, Police and Fire, it's not always easy to squeeze those into an hour, so we're trying to give them annual the appropriate amount of time. So I'll get that calendar out to you tomorrow. I plan on presenting the budget to all of you kind of at a thirty-thousand-foot view on April twenty-third during our meeting. So it'll just be, I do typically an eight, ten, twelve-page PowerPoint, just kind of highlighting what's driving it as far as new expenses, if there's any new positions, capital spending, changes in revenue, any one-time revenues, and kind of give you a sense as to where we're at. Budget books are, will be available for you to go away with that evening. And like I say, then we'll start rolling into the budget workshop schedule in May. We've targeted a potential adoption of the budget for the last meeting in June, but by charter, we would actually have two fallback dates to go into July. So by charter, the city council can adopt a budget as late as the fourth Monday in July without it then going into a default budget of the city manager's budget at that point. So I think it's a schedule that gives everybody their due, gives us an opportunity to wrap up in the middle part of June with general budget discussion, bring back additional department heads if we have follow-up questions for them, and not rush the schedule and give us a target date for adopting a budget, but having some fallback dates as well.
Councilor Lippman, has there been, between finance departments, the school department and the city, just sort of agreement what the numbers are that will go into the calculations?
We've shared with them as close as we can at this point, so we know the CPI number. And we don't know the new construction number. We'll have that final number when, this weekend. I mean, so Friday is the last business day of the month. Right now, we're at around eighteen and a half million. We've targeted twenty million, and that's actually been the projection we've been using probably for three or four months now. So we're, you know, we're within, we need basically an additional million dollars in building permit value to be pulled in March, which probably is not unrealistic considering that, you know, we're getting to the point where people can start getting in the ground and the weather's breaking to do that. So that's the target. It could come in a little higher, is, I guess, there's a potential that it could end up being nineteen million versus twenty million, but I think we're, we've landed pretty close, especially since the CPI number became known to us after the second week in January.
Follow-up. And so is the procedure, though, after we get those numbers finalized, to come to an agreement, just so no mistakes, no misdirection, if you will, by the time they get to the...
Yes, yeah, and we will, we will finalize those. We'll have the building report usually be at my desk by, probably by next Tuesday. So I mean, the work weekends on the thirty-first, they'll be calculating that. The report will be at my desk by Tuesday typically, and we'll firm that up with the exact numbers. And I think that we've already shared them with the school and they understand what we've presented right now, and I think we're all on the same page.
Go ahead. Just don't mean to harp on this line, but on the teacher's contract that we approved, there's language that I didn't think we'd expect that we'd see any draw upon the reserve that we set up. Just want to confirm that when that's available as well.
Yep, so I've got the, so in the third bullet point from the bottom of your handout on page eighteen, we show the school figure allowed under the tax cap is seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand. And I'm drawing a blank at this moment as to what the schools indicated when we went through the discussion on the teacher's contract, but I think they indicated if the tax cap allowed the schools to spend, and I want to say for some reason, eight-hundred-thousand sticks in my head, if they had eight-hundred-thousand available to them under the tax cap, then they were not looking necessarily to draw. So we're at seven-twenty-eight is what we're targeting. So we're, we're very close. I know the city has not contributed any money into that education stabilization account yet, but we have the opportunity between now and the end of the year from some of those one-time revenues that we targeted a year ago when we adopted the budget, and those were basically the sale of the Lakeport Fire Station, which has occurred. And we were targeting the sale of the property at Twenty-One Elm Street to Irwin Marine, which has not occurred at this point. So if that doesn't happen by June thirtieth, what we'll do is we'll just shift that one-time revenue and the ability to move it into contingency over to the next fiscal year budget and we can make that transaction.
So is the revenue from sale, sale of Twenty-One Elm Street in this year's budget?
We put it as a holding, yes. So we put it in as the revenue coming in, but not targeting it to anything other than in contingency.
Yeah.
So if the revenue doesn't come in this year, we haven't already spent that money for operational items.
Spent the fire station money theoretically, or at least we've, it's in the stabilization account.
I don't think we've, I don't think we've moved it in yet. It's there to do something with between now and year end and...
That's the understanding, we were going to use that money for the stabilization.
Either the fire station sale or the sale of Twenty-One Elm Street.
Oh, either.
Somewhere there. We, the city council made a commitment to put five-hundred-thousand dollars into that account one time.
And what did we get from Elm Street, three-something?
I think it netted out in the high threes, three-eighty-something, after we paid some expenses and stuff to it. And I think the gross number is a little over five-hundred-thousand we're anticipating when we close on Twenty-One Elm Street. And again, if Twenty-One Elm doesn't close this fiscal year, we aren't counting on that for operational money. We would just not realize the revenue nor the expense of moving into contingency. We would just plug that number into the following budget year and recognize it at that point. So I confirm up what we agreed to, the council agreed to with the school number, but I think we're pretty close. And I know the school did contribute some money into that account at the end of last year, so if there was a need for them to...
Right, that's drawn first.
Draw upon a small amount, there is some fund, there are some funds available for them to do so.
Sorry, are you at the end?
No, I was, haven't even started yet.
How rude of me, I'm sorry.
Well, Councilor Lippman started, so anyway, as of all... No, that's good. So the bullet points here, so what do we know that's driving the budget? So the county budget, we know, came in higher. If the county was subject to our tax cap and based on their portion of the budget and how we applied it to the formula, if the county budget increased approximately, our share, approximately eighty thousand dollars, we would consider that a quote-unquote "tax cap friendly" number. Our share, we're looking at about three-hundred-and-seventy-thousand, so there's about a two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-dollar impact that needs to be made up elsewhere within the municipal budget, whether that's on all on the city side or a combination of city and school. But that'll be our charge, my charge, to find those savings or reductions in order to present you a tax cap-friendly budget. The ambulance service, you know that LRG Healthcare is not renewing the contract. We've looked at some options on in-house, and as I shared with you, I think we can do it at a revenue and expense-neutral number. We did put out an RFP for ambulance services for the community late last week with an April twenty response date on that. And we did do outreach to several firms to let them know that that was out there. It was advertised in the paper, so April twenty is the, is the response date for anybody looking to do that. So we'll have more information there, but in the meantime, we'll plug in in-house. And again, I don't think, we're not looking for that to have a negative impact on our budget. Recycling costs, I've shared with you in a couple of articles. I think the prior council got something from me toward the end of last year. New council's gotten at least one, if not two, things from me this year. And just talking about how the commodity prices for the recyclables have just fallen through the bottom. There is no value, particularly in glass, and I'm forgetting the name of the paper, but it's the junk paper and that type of stuff, newspaper, whatever type of stuff. but it's the junk paper and that type of stuff, newspaper, whatever type of stuff. It is actually costing us on some of the commodities right now beyond the collection part of it, $100 a ton to dispose of some of the less desirable commodities, so there's more value in some of the aluminums and the metal components, but glass is just really a huge drain on recycling, as is that mixed paper, so that is something that we knew was impacting the budget that we're in right now. Our solid waste contract began on October 1st, we've, we've estimated some numbers last year and factored in nine months' worth of it, we think we're a little behind on our estimates, just based really on where some of these commodity pricing now is, because the risk is all on the communities, where before recycling...
Same behind, you mean we're spending more than we...
We're spending a little more to dispose of recyclables than we had anticipated, because at the time, some of these commodity prices were still only, only costing us $40 or $50 or $60 a ton to get rid of. Now, in some cases, they're costing us $100 a ton, and it's actually tied to a commodity market, so it's not, it's not our vendor saying, oh, this is what it costs this month, there's an actual commodity index that shows the spot price for various components, almost like you would for livestock, or grains, or precious metals, and those types of things, so there's something that validates the numbers, but it is a significant driver, and we kind of see this, and to borrow the phrase, as the new normal in recycling. So there's still value in recycling in the sense that we're not utilizing resources and using energy to re, you know, to produce new products, but the, the world of recycle all you can because it's a flat rate and the more you recycle, the more we're going to save, that's really flipped upside down in the last couple of years. So we're working through what the new normal looks like in recycling.
On recycling, Scott, I happened to be over to the Mesa Streets Station there where we got the, I think it's a 16-yard dumpster there, it's a pretty big one, and I think a lot of the problem is, is also is that the people aren't recycling properly. It was full of pla, I'm sure it was full of plastic bags, probably with some recycled material in it, but they won't take that. You've just got to take it to the transfer station and dump it, so all that recycling effort is useless.
I, I don't disagree with that, and we have tried to put information out everywhere we can, newspaper articles, in the newsletter, in handouts, in whatever, and unless we lock that down and only have it open when someone is there to physically man it and staff it and inspect what's going in there, that, that's a problem, and we've, we've been trying for years now to educate people about what is okay to put in there with, you know, pictures and diagrams and cute things, and, you know, the Daily Sun's been great in putting things out, and it's in the newsletter and in our public access station, and that happens sometimes, I mean, we, that's, that's a cost of if a load is diseased to be contaminated, it goes as trash. The flip side, you hate to say it, but in this day and price of where some of those recyclables are costing us, it might almost be a wash, but you lose the effort that people have made to, to bring it. The flip side to controlling it and gating it and locking it and only having it open from eight to four when staff might be there Monday through Friday...
It's going to be on the ground.
Well, either it's on the ground, or now people are frustrated that they can't come and recycle at hours that are convenient for them after work on a weeknight or on the weekends, or be on the ground, and the fact that we only collect recyclables every other week with our curbside, some people do have the need to get rid of some recyclables before the two weeks are up, so we struggle with it.
Yeah, actually, I was kind of curious on, because I remember the contract stating that we had to pay what was over and above the cost to the contractor, and going back to October till this past February, it's cost the city, on average, $10,000 to $11,000 extra every month.
Because of the change in the tonnage price, yeah.
Because of the change, I mean, October was 10.3, November was 11.8, December was 11.3, January was 9, and February was 10.9, so over $50,000 in that amount of time.
I'll have to, I'll have to see what you're looking at, that may not be what, I think that may be the tons we've collected and how much we've lost by not recycling, but I think the calculation of what we're paying to dispose, unless you've got something that I haven't seen, I just want to take a look at it, but yes.
Yeah, I'll be glad to show it to you.
Recycling costs are up significantly because...
Who compiled that?
Public Works. So where's that money coming out of for that we pay extra?
Well, sort of our solid waste budgets, we've budgeted for some of it, we knew the contract cost for the curbside went up for both recycling and trash, just the flash rate, the, the flat rate for the vehicles to drive around and pick up, and then our, our trash tonnage has, has tracked where we thought it was going to, and we knew those costs because we're part of the co-op. It's the tonnage of recyclables that we're now paying a greater amount per ton to dispose of than we budgeted for because of that drastic change in the market.
If, if this is accurate, which I don't doubt it would be, is, is there a way that, you know, I hate to keep adding lines of Darnett to fill in, but as part of the recycling thing that we do once a month or whatever, could that expense be added in there?
Let me see what you're looking at, we can, we certainly know the numbers, we're paying it, but I, I'm not sure of that specific document that you have.
Counselor Lippman had a question. So just to be clear for the, for council and for the public, is still more cost-effective to recycle than to just dispose, or is it not the truth?
It's probably not the truth on certain components, I mean, there's definitely value in the...
On a net, because, on a net value, I guess the issue is, has the market gone so against us on recyclables that it's more cost-effective to dispose of it?
Collectively, I'm going to say, yes, it's probably turned against us, and it's probably more cost-effective on a straight dollar amount to dispose of it as trash, but you need to weigh that against the use of resources, which recycling does versus letting it, having it with the landfill and the different cost of production going forward and trying to be environmental, and, so two different arguments, but on a purely dollar basis, we think as it stands today, and it may change in six months from now, but as it stands today, it would, it would help the city out of people threw glass in their trash as to not, as opposed to recycling it, at a purely dollar sense.
With respect to the costs in the contract with the recycling run, again, I'm just, I'm raising these issues, you know, we like to make good long-run decisions here, that's generally our, I think the council's philosophy, but given the list of things here, in terms of subsidizing something that isn't working the way it was historically, I guess, do we have contractual out to stop the recycle run?
Let me look into that.
Because, I mean, if, if we could save X hundred thousand, or X hundred on, on the recycling, we could still maybe offer the remotes stations for those who have a philosophical, I'm just saying from a pure dollar sense standpoint, do we have to reexamine this?
We could look at that, because of the curbside pickup in the bid was broken down from the four remote sites, and I think in discussions with a vendor, we've kind of based it on them collecting a certain amount of tonnage, but if the recycling tonnage were to blend in with the solid waste tonnage, and they're running that same route anyway, we'd have to have that conversation with them, but I, I think there's a possibility that it could work because they're still running the same route, and they're going to be picking up in theory additional tonnage by one truck versus having to run two trucks every other week with different staff and different vehicles, so.
Again, given our challenges, it's, we may need to do that.
Yeah, I just, you hate to be the one who says, you know, we've been begging for, begging for recycling, and through no fault of our own, but that's where the market is, and China used to be a big purchaser of those goods, and they just are not right now.
Counselor Balance?
Yeah, just from an environmental perspective, there's been a lot of debate recently among the scientific environmental community as to the actual value of recycling and whether it was as valuable when the whole recycling movement took effect, so, you know, in terms of cost-benefit analysis, that may be an argument that is taking shape.
And along those lines, you know, the carbon footprint, you know, what does it cost to process these, to drive them in a separate truck, to take them to a processing facility where there's energy used to do that, to bale them up, to get them to a port, to put them on a, a barge or a tanker of some kind, and ship them halfway across the world in a lot of cases. So you look, you look at a carbon footprint versus a natural resources discussion, and there's probably arguments that can be made for either side of that.
I'm, I'm just saying that, you know, 10 years ago, if you talk about recycling, everybody was talking about what tremendous value that had, and what the savings were, and what it did to the environment, and that just may not be true.
Well, the market's been China, right, historically?
It had been, and they've gotten tighter, they're using less, but they've also gotten tighter on the quality of recyclables, and therefore comes in with contaminated products they're rejecting.
And they send it back if they don't accept it.
So we can run some analysis and have that available for conversation.
All right, what's next?
Health insurance, as I've shared with the council, are not to exceed, renewal rate came in at just under 8%, we expect to have the final number hopefully in the next couple of weeks, so the, we'll firm that up. Debt service for the $2.5 million general street bond, only the partial year's interest is in this year's budget, so the remainder of that debt service will show up in next year's budget, and obviously, we can have the conversation about whether some or all of that will be funded out of the cash and the operating budget of the Public Works, but that's just to let you know that the remainder of that debt service needs to go into the budget.
In terms of the, is that, you're referring to the, the line item of the 70 or so thousand or 140, I forget which the number is now, that's being generated by the new, the fee that was added to the...
No, this was the 2.5 million that we bonded for the street...
No, I understand what it is, but in terms of the source of being able to pay for it, we could use that, no?
We could use that, I think the target was to try and let that roll over, because we're really talking about three bonded major street projects.
Yeah, okay.
So if we would let the extra $5 impact fee for the motor vehicle registration roll over for two years and use that for the final portion of union Ave, that could sustain itself if we didn't touch it for a couple of years of seed money. So we can put some scenarios to you, but we did a 2.5, we're going to get another $2.5 million bond in the next budget, which again, means only a partial year's interest payment to it, and then the third phase, we were targeting to use those motor vehicle registration revenues.
But after that, the total interest in principle would be roughly 300, correct? Somewhere around there?
No, you've got, we've got $5 million in principal just for the two, two and a half, so on a 10-year with no interest, that's going to be a half a million dollars, so 500,000 times 10 years is 5 million, and then you need the interest on top of that, so...
300 per each one, so roughly 600 in all.
600 and something, including the interest, and then the final project being at a million something, we're hoping to fund out of the motor vehicle registrations, because that's generating around 90,000 a year. If we let it accumulate for two years and then use that ongoing stream, that may have a dedicated stream to pay for that final million and change bond.
So, so right, right now, if we're doing 1.6 roughly, then we would still be left with roughly a million dollars in yearly paving from that budget?
Well, for this budget, we'd only, for this year, we'd only have the one bond to be paying, so...
Yeah, but I'm just saying, a couple of years...
Yes, but again, you heard through the presentation that our goal really is to be getting more dollars in that line item, so that is still something that I'm striving for, to find options to not be taking the full debt service out of the 1.6 that we put into the cash operating line, because we know we need to find ways to increase that in addition to the couple of two and a half million dollar bonds we're doing.
Yeah, okay.
So, working on that. You know that we've started early-stage collective bargaining agreement conversations, nothing more to report there. Colonial Theater I just mentioned, Don, we think that any bulk of any operational costs, knowing the timing where we're going to close somewhere in the coming weeks, is not going to fall on the next fiscal year budget, maybe a small piece of it, so we'll look at...
Maybe one month.
Right, and, and if there was any type of capital purchase or anything, we could look at that, so that's not really going to be a driver, so to speak, in the next, in the next budget. So the tax cap allowances, total for the whole budget, about 1.33 million, broken down by apportionment, that'd be about 80,000 on the county, 728,000 on the school, 526,000 on the city side. Revenues, we're probably going to see a modest increase in motor vehicle registrations, based on some conservative projections last year for the first year of doing the parking kiosks, and them not really coming fully online until end, end of June after Motorcycle Week this year, they obviously will be available starting Memorial Day as our ordinance states, and there'll be some additional revenue coming in, not, not a whole lot probably, but some on those weekends, and then we were a little conservative on the overall numbers, I think came in, we came in a bit stronger than we had anticipated, so we'll probably have a little bit of room to bump up the parking kiosk. We believe there's going to be a, a small one-time return of funds from the Concord Cooperative in terms of returning assets and surplus of contributions made that are above and beyond what they need to keep in for a healthy reserve, and then we are actually seeing the MetroCast franchise agreement payment leveling off and actually declining a little bit this year, and that's basically driven, I believe, to people having other options on how they get their television content through things I don't know, but streaming, I think, is what is referred to, and I probably can know the word Hulu was out there, but I know there's probably 10 other ones, but that used to see a steady increase of 10, 15, 20,000 a year in that agreement, and our number of our subscribers is down significantly, I know you shared them with Counselor Hamel in conjunction with putting the LRPA budget together, which is based on users of MetroCast in a community, and he questioned, is that the right number, and we double-checked it, and yeah, people are finding other ways and aren't using the traditional cable companies.
It was down like 400 and something.
Yeah, so, and our dollars are down, so not a huge amount, but we're, instead of seeing that, having steady increments, even though our cable bills go up every year, we're actually seeing the amount coming from the franchise fee dropping a little bit. And as we've had conversations the last couple of years, and you heard it with our auditor, and maintaining a healthy fund balance, last year, we dropped the use of surplus to help offset the tax increase from our undesigned fund balance, we used 935,000 two years ago, in this year's budget, we've used 835,000, so we made a reduction of 100,000. It's my intent to try to find, if possible, again, some other reduction, I can't tell you now if indeed that will happen, and if it does happen and what dollar amount it will be, but I don't think we should shy away of trying to keep that on a downward projection at whatever level we're able to do.
When the, when temporarily the significant part of what has been in our fund balance is out on loan, from an accounting standpoint, is that part of the 8% or not?
That, it would be part of the 8%, and that's going to get moved into a different silo, because we're basically committing that for a seven-year period.
Right.
And that was conversation, so when we, when we originally did the shorter-term loan for the 1.4, and I know we've had a few extensions, they kind of looked at that as short-term, definitely, we've already had conversations that that 4.2, although part of it's out of the TIF, so 600,000...
But for seven years, as part of the bond rating thing, we can count the money we have on loan?
It'll still be as an asset on the city's books, but it's not going to be sitting there available in undesigned fund balance, it'll be there as committed to something for a period, so...
But we're replenishing those funds through the TIF?
So the TIF is, the TIF is going to repay, you know, 100 or 150,000 dollars a year, every year, and try to get us down, but we still will have several million dollars outstanding. When you look at your audit book, you've got overall fund balance, which has things like stabilization accounts and capital reserves and trust funds and those types of things.
I'm just asking if you're counting that in the 8%.
The eight, that, 8% will be reduced by that amount, because it will not be available. If we, you know, if we had something catastrophic happen and the city had no one paying their taxes for the next 12 months, that 4.2 million on day one is not available to us as undesigned fund balance.
So what would that percentage be?
8% is what, 6 million?
I think it was high 5 million or maybe low 6 million, yeah.
5 million, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But again, 600 of that's coming from the TIF, so that wasn't in that number anyway, but yes, on paper, it's going to say that our fund balance is below the 8% level. So that's what's driving the budget.
Questions, Counselor Lippman? It's my night for questions, I guess. On the Keno funding kindergarten, can you refresh our memories how that plays into the budget?
That was going to the, to schools that had full-day kindergarten available to them, or were offering full-day kindergarten at a per pupil type of amount. I only know anecdotally, the state has said revenues were coming in higher than their projections, and I know that just from the timing of it, only the cities were able to enact Keno in the fall, and the towns either just did it in town meeting, or will if they've got a later town meeting coming up, but the state obviously, you know, knew that, the lottery commission knew that when they were doing the revenue projections, but... they were doing the revenue projections, but they've said that they're exceeding targets, so I, I haven't heard anything definitive, whether that means they're funding the full amount of targeted adequacy per pupil for July one or not, but we should know that shortly.
I guess, like, my larger question was, how's that factor into the budget overall?
That'd be a great question for the schools, because it's targeted for the kindergarten program, so it's, in essence, it's a revenue stream dedicated to the schools that isn't something that I have any jurisdiction over, per se, but I can certainly see-
Going back to, you know, is that additional security to-
Or, or if you're saying the county, in essence, is hurting us, does the new Keno money leave a little room for the schools to participate in some of that overage type of thing? So, those are questions and conversations we'll be having.
Anyone else? Questions? Comments?
Well, I'm gonna raise it now, and I'm not-
And you're gonna speak directly into the microphone, what are you doing?
And I'm not itching for a fight. I'm not.
Then don't say nothing.
But I believe that we're going to have to start dealing with the tax cap and how we're gonna deal with that. So, I'm just throwing that, that out there. I know I got no traction on this council with respect to that view, but we can't, year after year, take money from Peter to pay Paul. We can't rely on the sale of real estate to buy us out of avoiding the tax cap. And again, I'm not raising a debate at this time, I'm just saying it's an issue, and that I'm going to be addressing it as we go through the budget process. Don't throw things. Have a good night.
If I could just one quick response, Mr. Mayor, so I agree with you, we don't wanna use one-time sale of real estate, but I wanna be clear that-
We never have.
I've never offered that up, and the council has understood that from point one. One-time revenue has gone to stabilization accounts, one-time capital projects, those types of things, and we've never put that into an operational line item.
Counselor Bowles to donate his house to the city so we can sell it.
Okay, we can sell it. Then he said he wants to move in with you, though, Mr. Mayor, so-
I got plenty of room.
I, I understand the mandate that you have-
Okay.
-to, to prepare a tax cap compliant budget.
I, I think, I think the point is, we have done that sustainably for many years, and even before I got here, I'm not taking the credit for it, we have lived within it, and we've done it, so-
This is our third year that it's happened, and look at all the projects that were still done, even in lean years out there.
I, look, did I, did I start out this conversation with the statement, I know I got a lot of traction on this council with respect to this view, I know that I got a lot of support. No, I didn't. That happens to be my view, I think the tax cap is a bad idea, but irrespective of that, I'm going to be addressing it, and I know what kind of audience I'm addressing it to. So, there you go.
Have, have some faith, Counselor. So, let's, let's not encourage this at the moment.
You'd like to be home before midnight.
All right, so where are we?
I think I'm done. I can't, I can't top that.
Okay. So, we're on a new business, I believe, and we have four items of new business tonight. The first one is found on page nineteen of your packets, Counselors, and this is a request from Celebrate Laconia, that's the group that Ms. Clark is chairman of, to waive licensing, special events, and vendor fees for the city's one hundred and twenty-fifth celebration at Opichi Park on July seventh, two thousand and eighteen. So, before we get to making, and, and as I said earlier, Ms. Clark is with us tonight, so if we have any question, if you have any questions before voting on this, that you would like to ask her, she's available, I'm sure, to try to answer those questions. So, any questions or comments before we get to motions? All right, a motion being ordered to move to approve Celebrate Laconia's request to waive licensing, special event, and vendor fees for the city's one hundred and twenty-fifth celebration at Opichi Park on July seventh, two thousand and eighteen, pending approval from the Special Events Review Committee and the Licensing Board. Pending approval from those two events, could someone care to make this motion? Counselor Bowles makes a motion, seconded by, by Counselor Cheney. Discussion. I guess the question I would have is, why are we getting this if it hasn't been approved by those two committees?
I think just the timing of the calendars had it that it made sense to bring it here rather than wait until they met, I'm not sure the date's certain and how it ties in with our agenda setting, but I think they didn't wanna wait too long.
Are we aware of any significant issues before those two committees?
We've generally waived them for city events without any problem.
Counselor Ham-
I was at the Parks and Rec meeting Monday night, and there was two things that they brought up that was referred back to, I guess they've already been to that review committee once.
They've what?
They've been to that committee once, but they've added things that need to be re-reviewed, so that's why.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise a hand. Any opposed, please raise a hand. The vote is four to one in favor. Counselor Hamill was-
I got my hand up late, I, I'm four.
You're four?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right, so the vote was five to nothing approving it, and the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Okay, next item is a request to make Court Street no parking from Main Street to the Belmont Town Line, and that is on page twenty of your packet, and for a commentary on this, I'll turn to the city manager.
More or less housekeeping, Mr. Mayor, in all of our design and planning work for reconstruction on Court Street, Court Street, we've run across areas that still allow some on-street parking, and we think we should oughta be neatened up right now, and just make it clear that there is no parking on Court Street.
And there's, so legally, there are a few places where you can park on Court Street?
There are a few fifteen-minute parking in a few areas, and I think it's on page-
They're not marked, no.
No, they're not marked, but it's on page twenty-two, the odd-numbered side from certain building numbers and whatever, so they're few and far between and for very short periods, but I can't-
Does anybody use them now?
No, I haven't seen anybody park on Court Street.
I, I can't remember, Your Honor, any, seeing any cars parked there whatsoever.
I don't even know where they are.
That goes back to nineteen seventy-five, according to-
Yeah, we just think it's time to neaten that up and remove it from the books, just as a housekeeping.
All right, any questions before we get to motion? Comments?
I'd like to make a comment.
All right.
And it really has nothing to do with the parking spaces, but I have voiced my concern before, and I will voice it again. As we make improvements to Court Street, the pavement gets better and the traveling speeds get more and more and more, faster and faster and faster. That's still a residential area, there's school buses and the whole works, and I'm still convinced, I, I'm still very concerned about the speed limit and how it's enforced and the whole works.
So, I know that, obviously, once, I agree with you, once the construction's done, the road will, will be, it's just human nature to travel at a greater speed. I know Chief Canfield's aware of it, he's here tonight.
Yeah.
I know they just had the radar, they get the movable radar sign, I know that was down on one of the poles as you came by, by the pipe, the bypass coming into Laconia the other day, and it flashes when you go too fast, somebody told me that, I don't know that, I don't know that firsthand, but it does flash if you go five miles an hour over the speed limit, but anyway.
Did it flash for you?
I didn't say that, I just said somebody told me it flashed.
Didn't they just move that from Holman Street?
They moved it from Holman Street, I might complain about it.
He was on official business.
Anyway, it's, it's definitely on his, on his forefront, and I agree with you, once it gets to-
As we improve-
Right. We probably won't have to, we probably won't have to worry about it for the next year, but beyond that, once it gets there, yes.
Faster and faster.
Absolutely.
So, you're advocating for potholes on-
It has kinda stopped some of them, of course, now they use the center lane, too.
I love the potholes up on my street, I really do. I love the broken-down pavement, everybody goes really slow.
All right, a motion being ordered to eliminate the existing parking restrictions on Court Street and to approve no parking on Court Street on both the even-numbered and odd-numbered side from the Belmont Town Line to the intersection of Main Street. Does anyone care to make that motion?
I'll make the motion.
And a second, please. Counselor Hamill, second. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes affirmative that motion carries. Item number twenty C, which is on page twenty-three of your packet, is an assignment and assumption of the lease between the Laconia Airport Authority and Viking Technologies Corporations. And I can give you the background on that as far as the airport authority is concerned, so I think all of you know, perhaps the two newest members don't know, that, that the city owns all the land at the airport and leases it on long-term leases, generally twenty, thirty years, to various concerns, and from time to time, when someone sells their airplane or whatever, they, they wanna get out of their thirty-year lease or whatever, so we have a provision that allows us, with approval from the Airport Authority Board and the City Council, that we can transfer a lease that has years to go on it yet from one party to another. So, the, in this case, we're talking about a hangar that is under lease right now to Columbia Realty LLC, and they are selling their hangar and try, and want to reassign the lease to this Massachusetts company called Viking Tech. And, and I think the only thing that's in that hangar now is a helicopter, that has changed over the years. The Viking Technologies Corporation is a, as far as we can tell, is a manufacturer of light aircraft, like two-passenger aircraft. They're currently based down in Massachusetts, and they wanna move up here, so we'll have a manufacturing business in, at the airport, so we'll do that as a positive. We have, the, we have been asked by the current lessee to expedite this process, because they want to close the sale of their hangar this week, before April one, and, and so the Airport Authority held an emergency meeting last week to approve it from the airport standpoint, and that's why it's on the agenda tonight. I will say, as one caveat here, is as of the date of the Airport Authority meeting last week, we did, we had not yet vetted Viking Technologies. We've had no direct contact with them, our contact, direct contact has been only with the current lessee, not with the new one, and we, we need to do some due diligence, which we're doing right now, as to who they are and exactly, you know, what they're doing, and before we actually sign off on this. So, what we're doing tonight is, we're authorizing me to approve this, but I will tell you that I'm not going to sign that until the Airport Authority is, is convinced, if you will, that this is a viable tenant that will read its, meet its obligations and duties and whatnot. We had not done that as of last week, so if that's not done by the end of this week, then I won't sign it until it is done. But you're, so you're basically authorizing me to sign the documents, I'm just saying I won't do it until I'm satisfied that we have properly vetted the new lessee.
So, we're trusting you.
Because we're, yeah, because we're tied into a long-term agreement with them, and if they can't pay the bill, then it's gonna be an issue.
I trust you.
Any questions? Counselor Lippman?
I'll make the motion to-
All right, Counselor Moosian makes a motion to authorize Mayor Ed Engler to sign the assignment and assumption of lease and notice of assumption of lease between Viking Technologies Corporation and the Laconia Airport Authority. Second for that, Counselor Hamill, second, is that motion, any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes affirmative that motion carries. Thank you. All right, last item of new business is on page twenty-four of your packet, a discussion of a land lease proposal received in response to request for proposal number eighteen oh one dash zero two regarding land located off Frank Bean Road and Route eleven B. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the city went out for an RFP back in January to do a land lease on these two areas that are environmentally sensitive, meaning we don't wanna be putting anything in the ground there that is disturbing clean soils or caps or that type of stuff, so logical uses are slab or above-ground type of uses, self-storage units, or solar arrays, solar farms. The two parcels we had, the mayor mentioned, the Frank Bean Road and the fifty-nine acres out on eleven B, which is a former landfill site. The long and short of it is, we received one response, and that's the one that I gave you a couple of weeks ago from New England Solar Garden in conjunction with Nobus Engineering. You've seen the background information on various projects that they've completed or in the midst of completing here in the state. Gone back to them, so the, so the breakdown for the revenue is on page thirty-one, and combined between the two sites, it's about forty-nine thousand and change. If you break it down between the two-acre Frank Bean site, that's based on what it would generate for power, and the fifty-nine acre site, in terms of dollars, the fifty-nine acre site is generating forty-five thousand dollars a year, the Frank Bean site around four thousand dollars a year.
So, point of clarification here, so in the, in the item on the agenda says just Frank, oh, it says and Route eleven B, okay.
Yeah, so that's what, that's what we went out for the RFP, so that's what I was looking to discuss with you. So, the large parcel will generate forty-five thousand a year between a lease payment and a payment in lieu of taxes on the infrastructure they put in of the Frank Bean site will combine do a little over four thousand dollars.
Questions and comments?
Could you address the bottom row there of the sixty thousand in savings?
Yes. So, the sixty thousand is actually tied into a piece of legislation that was on the handout that you had, that was presented to our delegation tonight, and right now, the only way we would be eligible for a energy rebate savings through a PPA, and that's a power purchase agreement, is if tied to net metering, if you're purchasing your power from your local supplier, and in our case, that's EverSource, and we're not purchasing our power from a local supplier right now. We go out with a commodities broker on purchasing energy through the open market and get a rate that's more attractive than was available to us there. This legislation that, and I'm drawing a blank, I think it's passed one chamber, and it's in the other chamber right now, and it passed the first chamber rather easily, would change the provision that a community could qualify for a rebate based on the megawatts of power produced, I'll turn to Wes in case I say something wrong here, but without having to buy it from your local regional provider. So, if this legislation passes and it gets signed into law, sixty days after that, we would be eligible for that type of rebate, and that's tied into the six point four, or six point, I'm sorry, four point eight megawatts of power and the six million kilowatts that it produces on an annual basis. So, the sixty thousand in rebate is tied into the six million in kilowatt-hours generated. If this legislation passes, we'd be eligible for that. If it doesn't pass, we're not eligible for it unless we wanted to purchase our power from EverSource directly, which isn't cost-effective for us at this point, we'd rather forego it. The other condition on it is that the entity needs to be able to utilize all that power. So, right now, the city would use about thirty-five, thirty-seven percent of the power available, and the water department would probably, combined with the city, allow us to use half of the power that is generated. So, our question back to New England Solar Gardens and Nobuses, are we able to use that for other entities within the city? Can we say to the school, what's your power usage, and throw that into the mix so that we can take full advantage? And they said yes, and if, even if you can't find people to use it, they've got a waiting list of people to use. Our response was, I think we can find Laconia-based entities between city, water, school, if we need to go beyond there, we can look at the Housing Authority, we could look at the ice rink, there's other things that we can come up with that benefit a local, either government organization or a local nonprofit type of thing, so-
We would be purchasing the-
We are not purchasing, but we're able to get the rebate to it, because it's generated through a lease that the municipality is doing the land lease with these guys, and is tied into a rebate program separate from this, but tied to the net metering. So, that would be above and beyond. So, I don't wanna promise that we're gonna get that, but I would say it looks likely that we collectively, an entity of city, water, school, and someone else, could benefit from a rate reduction in the amount of sixty thousand dollars annually in addition to a forty-five thousand dollar annual land lease and, and payment in lieu of taxes payment. At this point, I would recommend that we focus on the fifty-nine-acre cycle, a parcel, for four thousand dollars a year for the Frank Bean, minimizing that, but we might have a higher and better use for a two-acre flat site in an industrial zone next year, five years from now, and to lock it up for thirty years at four thousand dollars a year.
Can we assume from that, that's not that big a deal to them either?
No, they're, they're fine with splitting this up and taking the fifty-nine acre, so that's really staff recommendation. So, that's really staff recommendation. Moving this out a little bit would certainly allow the legislation to get through, and we could firm up what we're entitled to, but even if we weren't entitled to the rebate through the power purchasing agreement, I still think $45,000 a year for a site that we're doing nothing with right now over 30 years is going to generate $1,003,000 and change. And they've got the experience in working on landfills. They're low invasive. If you give your consensus to this tonight, what we'd like to take the next step is to have some kind of a more defined schematic as to how this sits on the parcel, be able to identify how high the highest structure is. We already know that there is no noise on the site more than a light humming that you might hear on a transformer box on any city block that you go by where you heard that little whatever. There's no noise like on paddles from a wind farm type of thing. So, we just want to get a sense of how that sits in with the neighborhood, and in particular, the Governor's Crossing Development is there, and there's a couple of phases to go, so we just want to look at tree buffer, height, all that type of stuff, where it sits on the site, and be able to define that a little more.
Really, what you're looking for tonight is whether there's any resistance to this idea on council.
Correct, and before we spend any more time on the city or with this particular group to flush this out, staff recommends that we go forward on this one site and just kind of advertise to the public so the public has a chance to weigh in on the impacts. We think the impacts are negligible, if that.
So, we're not looking for a vote tonight. We're just looking for a consensus.
That would be my ask, yes.
All right, who wants to weigh in? Anyone? Counselor Littman, please proceed.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Please proceed.
I guess my only question is, do we have an escalator in the lease?
There is not. We asked that question after the last time, and it's based on their power output. In some cases, they're actually, they say they're taking some risk because as more power sources may come online, and they may come in more efficiently, they're locking a risk in based on what they know they can generate, and, you know, they're probably bidding it with some wiggle room, but, you know, there's new sources of electricity that are coming in from different mechanisms all the time, so the price is the price without an escalator.
Anyone object at this point in time to proceeding with this?
No, I don't object at all. I don't object at all because I think we discussed this last time, and, you know, using $40,000, $50,000 on a piece of property that's doing nothing. The only question I have is kind of like what Counselor Cheney was referring to. What if in 10, 15 years, they have new development in technology on solar panels that double the output? You know, that would, you know, might...
I think if they were changing the use in any material way, either in height or going out to what we agree upon from the parameters, they probably would have to come back to us if they were doing something on the same footprint that wasn't changing the terms of what they were using.
Well, I'm not saying so much that they would physically change them, but just the same panel with new technology might be able to produce more kilowatts. I was wondering if something could be put in there that if they double the kilowattage due to technology, if due to technology improvements, they're able to increase their output of kilowattage, that the city could be reimbursed at a higher rate.
We can ask that. I think at the same time, they're going to say that they've based this on the useful life of the panels, and they know their replacement schedule, and then if they have to go and invest in new technology, they've added more costs to the site. We can have the conversation, but I'm not optimistic that they're going to offer something unless it expands the scope of what they're doing in terms of land usage type of thing.
We're not approving this now, anyway. We're just getting a consensus to go forward with discussions and negotiations with respect to potentially beneficial use of this piece of land for the city, and that all makes sense to me.
Right, and I think from staff perspective, we want to get the word out that the city is looking to do this so that a butters can get a feel for what this does, you know, in their part of the city.
How close is the current, how close would the field be from the nearest house?
That's what we want to go out and walk, and not that it would be quite doing a balloon test like you would with a cell tower to see how high, but that's what I want to know, what the tallest structure is.
The tallest balloon test?
Right, so I think if you look at page 25, the top picture is our site. So, where exactly our property line runs, you can see there's a green buffer between the solar array and the dirt road.
Is that a cul-de-sac there right above?
And I know, so that, I believe, is the Governor's Crossing Development, so I don't know if that's an actual paper road or a road they've made, or whether that's just a work area for them.
That could be 100 yards or something.
Right, so that's what I think we want to do because the last thing we want to do is put something that someone's going to say, "I can't sell my houses there now." So, we want to look at that and make sure that nobody is impacted in a negative way if we move forward with this.
Are these actual houses that I'm looking at here in this aerial photograph?
No, those are infrastructure they'd be putting in. So, the solar arrays harvest the energy, and it feeds into some kind of a little transformer type of box that's around, and I think those are the ones that collect it and then feed it into the grid.
Where is the access road to this property?
It's my understanding we have a deeded access point coming through the Governor's Crossing Development.
Oh, really?
Yeah, but again, when they come in and do this, it's really with hand carts and pouring slabs, more or less in glorified wheelbarrows.
I don't see any road here that goes through.
Yeah, we've got an easement coming through the Governor Crossing to that parcel for ongoing maintenance and access for testing and monitoring that we do right now.
So, they won't pierce the membrane?
Absolutely not. They say everything is above ground, there's low-impact equipment going in, and you could see the sites they've already done work in, including Franklin and Milton, and, you know, they've got a half dozen of them. Hillsborough, Franklin, Conway, Farmington, Somersworth, they're well-established on working on these types of sites and not piercing any, not even going in the ground.
All right, well, it sounds like you have the consensus you were looking for, so you can proceed.
Great, I'll get back to you when we have more information.
Okay. That concludes new business tonight. There's one item under unfinished business, but I'm not aware of any new developments on the Union Avenue Elm Street intersection.
Not so much new developments. I think there was consensus last time, if you want to take it off the table, to say that we were going to design the improvements and put them on the shelf so they're user-friendly, and I think there was also consensus to try and coordinate the lights at Elm Street and Clinton.
We've already done that, right?
Well, I think you've talked about it, but I don't think we've, I don't think we've seen...
I think we put it back on the table.
You've had the conversation about it, but we haven't seen something formal that, yes, the council wants to go ahead and make those, do the engineering and make the adjustments to the lights.
So, how...
I move to take this off the table.
How timely, I'm sorry, what?
Excuse me. Go ahead. I would move to...
I just wanted to ask how timely this is.
We'd like to do the engineering while we're out there right now doing the engineering, so that part is timely.
Like it done tonight.
I would like that done tonight, yes.
So, I don't have a motion.
I would, we first want to move it from the table.
I want to take, I move to take that off the table.
All right, is there a second to take item 21A off the table? Thank you. All right, any, all those in favor of taking it off the table, please raise a hand. Five votes affirmative, and it is back on the table. So, where do you want to go with it?
I want to move to approve the engineering and design work as conceived by a straight-through and right-hand turn lane on Union Avenue with the understanding that we would put that engineering and design work, including the traffic lights, not the traffic lights, but the traffic lights also, put that on the shelf, that we're not approving the actual project itself, but we're going to get the work done now and save ourselves some money. So, we would go forward with the engineering and design. Is that adequate for your purposes?
That is adequate for that part, yes.
Everybody get that? Madam Clerk, did you get that? All right, does anybody second that motion?
Word for word, right?
Do you have a second to that motion, please, anybody?
I'll second it.
Counselor Haynes seconds it. Discussion. No discussion? Although, all those in favor of Counselor Bowles' extemporaneous motion, please raise a hand. Five votes affirmative, that motion carries.
This is a record. I got five votes. I can't believe it.
And then a second, a second motion would be to coordinate the lights on the Elm Street and Clinton to work.
This is a first. Counselor Bowles got five votes.
I didn't want to steal the moment from him.
Congratulations.
Okay, I move to coordinate the lights on Elm and Clinton and Elm and Union Avenue.
Is there a second for that motion? You trying to tell him not to push his luck here? All right, Counselor Cheney seconds that motion. Any discussion?
Could we have Wes just go over that one more time before we vote on it, what's going to happen with the lights?
Traffic signal-wise, Elm Street and Clinton will be put on the same phase. So, when the signal changes, what will happen is the two people head on, if they're both making left turns, they can go. Otherwise, they're going to have to follow the normal rules of the road to make the turning movements.
Which nobody knows.
But that's part of the reason why we're tying it in conjunction with the project to give us opportunity for education and other avenues of progress.
You'll have to put some signs up there that say, "Yield on Green."
Yes.
Because otherwise, the police will be there a lot.
There'll be traffic coming.
All right, everybody understand what we're talking about in terms of synchronizing the signals?
This has been that way forever.
Any further discussion? Okay, we're going to see if Counselor Bowles can hit another home run tonight here. All those in favor, please raise a hand. Oh, look at that. Oh, slowly. Five votes affirmative, that motion carries. Now, we need to put this back on the table again.
We could, but I think rather than just leave it hanging in unfinished business, might it make sense to move it to future agenda items and just park it off of the regular part of the calendar where we have it?
All right, so we need a motion to move this item, 21A, from unfinished business to future agenda items.
Oh, no, I'm not taking my chances three times in a row.
Counselor Hamel makes that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Counselor Haynes seconds the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes, and the affirmative that motion carries. All right, council comments? Anybody?
I've already made my comment.
You've already made, yeah, we don't need to go there again tonight. All right, I think that's it. We don't need any, we don't have a need for non-public tonight.